I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person should channel with.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Huth.
Otto.
Present.
Pat.
Present.
Wayland.
Here.
Wyman.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, could I?
We have a quorum.
Could I address the council on a point of personal privilege?
Mr. Otto?
Yeah. I have here a resignation letter I'm submitting to the mayor. I'm going to go ahead and read it into the record. It says, "Dear Todd, it's with great regret that I hereby tender my resignation for all as alderman for the Seventh Ward of Urbana. As you know, I'm to be married on Saturday, October 23rd, and am joining my new wife at our home on 212 West Oregon. Unfortunately, this house is not located in the Seventh Ward, so I'm required by law to resign my seat. It's been a great privilege to serve the people of Urbana in this position and to work with you, the staff, and the other members of city council on the problems and issues facing Urbana. I wish all of you well. If you have any questions or I can be of any assistance to the city, please do not hesitate to contact me." And I guess I just want to say, as sincerely as I possibly can, it has been a great honor and a great privilege to serve for past three and a half years. I think we've accomplished a lot of good things for the city of Urbana. We doubled the size of our library without any debt. We kept the budget in balance during the most difficult economic times in my memory without raising taxes or running a budget deficit. And we also have, for the first time in 20 years, Urbana surging ahead in housing starts and developing the tax base that will need to educate our children, continue to maintain our parks, and support our schools. So I thank you all for the opportunity to serve with you, I think, the people of the Seventh Ward. And if there's anything I can do to help anyone here, why, I hope you'll feel free to call on me. Thank you.
Mr. Otto, I accept your resignation. And while we're doing this, I know many of you are aware that Ms. Huth has tendered her letter of resignation from the city council dated yesterday, and I've accepted that resignation as well. And I'd like to be among the first to thank Ms. Huth and Mr. Otto for their service, very unselfish service on the city council. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and as Mr. Otto was saying, you know, both of these council members can be very proud of the job that they've done over the years. The city has a record, I think, that is surpassed by none of our size. Mr. Otto mentioned the way we've been able to plan financially, even in these tough financial times. Urbana does not have a deficit. We've not had to lay off people in city staff positions. Looking at downtown, our library is well underway to construction, a project that was done without any debt. And there are just a number of other accomplishments that both Mr. Otto and Ms. Huth have been a part of over the last four, and for Ms. Huth, for the last seven or eight years. So I know public service is in both of your hearts, and so I certainly look forward to working with both of you in your other capacities. And we have a small token of our appreciation to both of these council members. Luckily, they can crank out these signs over public work pretty fast. We have for Milton Otto, Milton Otto Lane, and his dates of service, May 2001 to October 2004. Mr. Otto, thanks again for your service. And Ms. Huth isn't here tonight, but we've got a sign for Ms. Huth as well, and again, her dates of service on the council. I'll just set that at her desk there. We can arrange to get that to her. Give a hand to Ms. Huth. And if the council will indulge me for just a minute as we deal with the resignations, I do plan to have an open process in going through the appointment process for the replacement to fill out the remainder of these two council seats. The term is up in May of next year, so it would be filling the term until that time. Of course, there's a city election in April, so that will determine who has the seat for the four years, starting May of 2005. I'd like to encourage people in Wards Five and Seven, if they're interested in public service at this level, to contact my office. And the number is 384-2456. And I'll say that again, so that people don't forget it at the end of this. But or come up personally to the office here at the city building, 400 South Vine. I do want to give people some time to consider whether they'd like to serve in this capacity. So I'll be accepting applications for the next few weeks. Then after that, we'll be scheduling interviews with everyone who applies, and we'll be submitting recommendations to the council, my hope is, within the next four to six weeks. So again, I encourage everyone interested in service at this level in Wards Five and Seven, if you're qualified to serve, contact my office, the number 384-2456. And so I hope to be hearing from a number of you. Thanks very much. Go ahead with the regular agenda. Council members, you'll see that I think Mr. Holtz gave a, an agenda with, depending on the number of council members, so we'll be using the numbers to pass items tonight with five council members. So you just use that column. So it will take only a majority of three council members to pass an ordinance tonight with a regular majority. With that, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. First is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. I'll go on to petitions and communications. We have a number here. First is Dennis Roberts, 507 East Green Street, on the topic of Ward Five, representation, wishing to introduce himself as a candidate. Dennis? And as he's walking up, I'll remind everyone that wants to speak of public participation, you have up to five minutes.
Hello. I do live just a couple blocks from here, east of here, on Green Street, 507, corner of Green and Grove. And it came to my attention a couple of weeks ago that it's very likely that our ward representative, Laura Huth, would be resigning from the council due to a conflict of interest. She asked me if I would consider offering myself as a person to fill her position on the council, and I said, "Well, I'd have to think about it." And I did think about it for a while, and I decided that, yes, it would be an experience that I could accept, would like to do, and I'm sure would be something in which I would learn quite a bit about myself and city government at the same time, understanding that it was for a position as an interim individual. And I thought that I would read a small statement to you as preliminary, just to show, just to explain who I am. As a citizen of Urbana and a resident of Ward Five, I have followed the recent developments concerning the Ward Five, Representative Laura Huth, since the time that she accepted the position of local director of Habitat for Humanity. And I and my neighbors were puzzled and dismayed, and ultimately saddened that instead of showing support for Mrs. Huth in taking on activities on both Urbana's civic life and Habitat for Humanity, that the mayor's office and the city council became, has become enmeshed in accusations and controversy. As I understand it, the city could file for a conflict of interest waiver on behalf of either colleague, but that this step, it could have cleared up the issue and might have benefited both the city and Habitat for Humanity. But for whatever reason, the city did not pursue this course of action. Ultimately, the issue has come, become impossible to resolve, and the residents of Ward Five are saddened to hear that, over the weekend, Alderman Huth announced her resignation to the city council. This leaves Ward Five, city council seat vacant. The change, the change of events has made me consider how my ward can maintain an active and fair representation during the time period starting now until the next local election in the spring. In thinking at length about the issue, I realize that sometimes a solution to a problem is not reached by sitting along at the sidelines as an observer, but at some, at some time, personal action is required. And up to this time, I've had, I have been active in the community as a board member and also as a chairman of HUNA, the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association. But with the current impasse and the resulting resignation of Laura Huth, I realize that I could do more in terms of public service at this time. So I've decided to offer my name as, to be considered to fill the Ward Five vacancy on the city council. Basically, to summarize, I've been a resident of the ward for eight years since moving to town. I am a resident who also has an apartment in the upstairs of my home, so I am both the landlord and homeowner. So I understand the dual, the dual conditions of this kind of situation in our city. Due to zoning variance that the neighborhood was informed about, we found one of the homes in our neighborhood, a block from my house, was converted from a single bungalow to a five-plex apartment. The discussion over that issue brought neighbors together. They met in my home. And in my living room that evening, the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association actually was formed. Since its formation, I've been a part of it. A few years ago, we became a legal nonprofit entity so that we could apply for a NOG grant with the city. We did so successfully, and with that money, we've hosted several different projects. Probably the most memorable is the Brick Sidewalk Restoration Workshop. That was like a pet project we seemed to fall into by chance, more or less, but we were concerned about that issue. It seemed appropriate that the Neighborhood Association be involved in it. And the result was that not only did the city begin to actually restore the sidewalks for the first time in 90 years, which was, I think, quite an achievement, but our efforts on the, the association's efforts led to us being awarded a Historic Landscape Award by PACA. Well, other events that have involved me as a member of HUNA and then now the chairman of HUNA, has been discussing community planning with Rob Kowalski, who is the city planning manager, addressing and listening to the City Planning Commission and Michael Pollak, who's in charge of that. We recently received another NOG grant for our community to build home preservation, community building, and promote the neighborhood program development. And we have just recently begun two additional projects. One is that we're drawing up our own neighborhood comprehensive plan, in which we hope to set forth goals and the interests of our community as far as growth development, including business potential, and to mesh this with the city plan, the comprehensive plan that's now being drafted by the city. And Rob Kowalski actually recommended that we consider this, and we have taken this on as a serious recommendation. Last week, I met with members of the Urbana Park District, and through a discussion with Vicky Mays and Tim Bartlett, we discussed our interest as a neighborhood association in the condition of Victory Park, which is our only city park in our neighborhood. It's a project that the neighbors themselves requested we look into, and through that discussion, they promised verbally to include reconsideration of the, and perhaps refurbishing Victory Park as one of their major tasks for the 2005 strategic plan. So with these kinds of activities that I've been pursuant since becoming involved with HUNA, I felt that I was finding public service to be a calling. It's not really a calling, but I find that I'm awakened to think about how to serve in the community with more purpose. And when Laura mentioned that this position was going to open and asked me if I was interested in it, of course, I immediately kind of shied away from it. I'm not really a political, you know, truly political being, but I am interested in public assistance and public activity. And sometimes you pick a larger picture of yourself so that you have personal growth while possibly helping other people. And those are really my intents. Then, coming home from Charleston, where I'm preparing to give a series of talks at the, at the library, I stopped at the First Walk Restaurant, takeout place, Chinese food Sunday night, and got home, had my meal at the end. I had a fortune cookie on my table. I opened my fortune cookie, and the fortune cookie told me, "You are interested in public service and would make an outstanding statement."
What are your lucky numbers?
So whether that is a sign of destiny or not, I'm sure the city council will decide. But anyway, I do have a sincere interest in helping, and whether it's possible that I can assist, assist the city on filling Laura's seat, certainly for a temporary basis, I'll certainly let you people decide. Okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Alice Engelbretson, 501 East California.
I think most of you know that I'm resident in Ward Five, and have to say, it was very distress to hear that Laura was going to have to leave her position. She's been an excellent, excellent representative for our neighborhood, and I can't help but feel that this just didn't have to happen this way. But given that, you just heard Dennis Roberts. Isn't he good? Isn't he good? Well, I'm here to tell you, I think he's really good. I've worked with him on HUNA for several years and been very impressed with his common sense, his innate wiseness, and I just think he would be an excellent choice to replace Laura in Ward Five. And I don't know what his future plans are, but I know he'd be a great asset to the city council as a whole, and certainly a great asset for Ward Five, and I think a great asset for the city of Urbana. Any questions?
Alice. Next is Carl, 2906 Rutherford Avenue, on the Planning Commission meeting.
Good evening. My name's Carl Moulhren, and I live over at 2906 East Rutherford Drive. And I'm here this evening about a meeting that occurred in this, these chambers a little bit under two weeks ago. The Planning Commission met to vote on whether they should pass on a special use permit for all these. And it was a very interesting meeting. Unfortunately, it ended inappropriately. We were told that public input was done. I told at least five people who were about to stand up and speak that they should be quiet because public input was over. However, the commission allowed all these to have their public input. Therefore, in my view, that meeting was inappropriate, and any findings that they had were also inappropriate. They additionally left a motion on the floor and never dealt with it. The motion was to postpone the decision about all the special use permit, and it was left on the floor. I would suggest to the city council to review the minutes of that meeting, and I frankly feel that that meeting should be revisited. They should have another meeting. They should allow the complete public input and not just a portion of it, and they should rescind their findings that they currently have until they can finish the meeting appropriately. That is my request, and my question is, is there a way for me to get a copy of the minutes of that meeting? Is that available to the public?
Well, it's available to the public. I'm not sure if they're complete at this time. I don't know. Takes a little while to get those minutes done, but when they're complete, they're available to the public, yes.
What should I do to get a copy?
Contact our community development department, and they're on the first floor here at the city building. It's 384-2440, if you want to call or stop on by here.
I will. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Meg Miller from 501 East High.
I'm just reading.
Oh, okay, just read it, okay. Want to publicly thank Laura Huth for her service and support for Dennis Roberts. And Scott Dossett, 501 High, did you want to come up, Scott?
Sure. War. Hi, my name is Scott Dossett, and I live at 501 East High Street. And Meg's my partner, my wife of 10 years, and she's why I'm in Urbana, which is cool. And I'm here to support Dennis for this Ward Five vacancy that we have. I'm a 10-year citizen of Urbana and serve on the Historic Preservation Commission, and I feel a little bit out of balance here because I had Indian food for lunch, and so I can't match Dennis's, Dennis's deal. But Dennis is a friend of mine. I think he's a well-balanced individual, and I think he certainly has what I call shoe-leather equity in our ward. Every time we've gone out to beat the streets, whether it be for HUNA or for other causes that Dennis feels attached to, he does a good job and really dedicates himself to that. He mentioned HUNA and some of the things that we've done with the Neighborhood Organization Grant on a little bit more of a personal level, I guess, perhaps. You might be interested in knowing that, in addition to doing all this comprehensive planning stuff, Dennis annually runs a really nice kids' crafts table where people who come to our annual barbecues for the neighborhood organization, his kids can come down and paint and draw and do things that are really creative. And I think that he'll certainly lend that same zest for service and that creativity to serving on the council. I think Dennis is really ready to make an investment in Urbana. His life has taken him really over a lot of parts of the country, doing a lot of creative stuff, and I think he'll make, make a really good representative for Ward Five. I think he understands the dynamic of our little part of the community and has really, again, invested himself already in our part of town. So I would hope that the mayor would work toward, certainly proceed with his plan and try to work on the short end of this four-to-six-week period that you mentioned before, Todd. You know, on all the commissions, and I'm certain on the city council, there are times when a quorum is hard to come by, and that's happened in this body, and I don't believe that you're going to get a better representative from Ward Five than Dennis. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next is Scott Wyatt, 204 South Grove, Scott.
He's in Green.
Okay. Supports Dennis Roberts to fill the Ward Five vacancy, and thank you to Laura. And next is Ann Reisner of 905 South Bucy, on the topic of parking on Iowa.
Yeah, this is a matter that came up a couple of weeks ago at the last city council meeting. I own the house in back of the sorority, along with Dick Brizzy, my partner, and we're particularly concerned about the impact of the parking lot that is probably going to be constructed on Iowa, including noise, lights. We're also concerned because no one has talked about drainage. And we have not a lot of confidence in whether or not the, the parking lot is actually going to be, structurally affect our house for two reasons. One of which is that the sorority already has a parking lot, which they asphalted over, and that parking lot's water is all draining into our property, creating a nice little lake during significant parts of the spring. And also, that, that particular lake does indeed threaten this in structural integrity of our house. And we would like to request that city council direct city officers to pay attention to, in addition to overhead lighting, which is a nuisance, the cars that drive into their parking lot, which are a nuisance, and shine directly into our house, and also the potential drainage issue, which, again, could be much more than a nuisance, could really, really affect the property. And I would like to point out that there is precedent for paying attention to this, one which is in back of the Presbyterian Church. I believe that the parking lots have asphalt on, the parking lot has asphalt running down so that the center of the parking lot, which is a grassy strip, is actually taking most of the drainage. I suspect it would have to be fairly slanted in the sorority for it to take care of the water that is, first of all, in our property, and then to adequately take care of the additional water from the additional asphalt. This is also consistent with common law dating back to England that says one farm cannot affect the flow of water on another property, specifically at that point, another farm. Okay?
Okay.
And I also like Laura.
Next is Carol Inske, 606 East High, on a replacement for Laura Huth.
Just supporting Dennis Roberts.
She says, supports Dennis Roberts as a new council member. And Matthew Murray, also at 606 East High.
My name is Matt Murray. I've been a resident of Ward Five for over 11 years, and I've been very, very pleased with the representation of Laura Huth, and I know that she was overwhelmingly elected in her last election, and so that I hope whoever she gives her endorsement to, which in this case would probably be Dennis Roberts, would be respected. I think that's a nod to the residents of the ward, and I also know Dennis has worked very hard with the Urbana, with our Neighborhood Association, and I would like to give my support to him also as a resident.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public participation this evening?
Yes, I'd like to announce that Angela Markham's father died this last Saturday, and Jim Hayes's mother passed away this morning. I was asked by Curtis Pettijohn to read the following statement about Roger Markham. "On Saturday, this community lost a friend and educational leader. On Saturday, Roger Markham lost a valiant battle with colon cancer. He died at home with hospice care, surrounded by family, loved ones, stories, tears, laughter, and lots of love. A special thanks to Carl Hospital, hospice nurses and aides. Amazing isn't a big enough word for you. Roger is remembered as the principal of Urbana Junior High School for many years, a faithful Illini fan, and until a few weeks ago, has been the treasurer for the Urbana Schools. He loved kids and inspired many in our community. A memorial service will be held this Wednesday, the 20th, at 4:00 p.m. at-" A memorial service will be held this Wednesday, the twentieth, at 4:00 p.m. at the First Presbyterian Church of Urbana. An educational scholarship is being arranged in his name. We will miss you, Roger." So I would like to call for a moment of silence for the loss of these two. Thank you.
And Jim, our thoughts certainly go out to you as you deal with the passing of your mother, so anything we can do to help? No. Any other council member participation? Okay, we'll get on with the agenda then. We have no old business, so we'll go to reports from the Standing Committee, the Committee of the Whole, and...
Mr. Whalen.
Mr. Whalen, you're chair right now, I guess, so would you mind giving the report from the Committee of the Whole?
The Committee of the Whole met, and the following six ordinances or resolutions are being presented for our consideration. A is ordinance number 2004-08-111, an ordinance vacating a portion of Wright Street adjacent to Dunbar Court forwarded from the October 4th, 2004 city council meeting with no discussion or action taken at that time. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
No discussion. I'm sorry. I always do that.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, will a clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Chanowith?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Whalen?
Next item is Resolution Number 2004-10-020R, or OR. Not sure. A resolution determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy, something we do every year, 2004.
For the tax year 2004, do you want to go ahead and make the motion for the committee, Mr. Whalen?
Yes, I'll also move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will a clerk please call the roll? Actually, we can just do this by voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Whalen?
Yes, third item is ordinance number 2004-10-138, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance regarding police and fire pensions for fiscal year 2004 and 2005. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, will a clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Chanowith?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Mayor Satterwhite?
Yes. That motion carries with six ayes. Mr. Whalen?
Yes, the next item is a resolution number 2004-10-021R, a resolution determining the amount of surplus funds in the City of Urbana Tax Increment Financing District Number One for fiscal year 2004 and 2005. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Mr. Whalen?
Yes, ordinance number 2004-10-136 is an ordinance approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement regarding Pravina Behavioral Health and at the Mental Health Center Project Number 0405-6. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will a clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Chanowith?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Whalen?
Next item is ordinance number 2004-10-137, an ordinance approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement, Homestead Corporation of Champaign-Urbana Project Number 0405-5, and I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will a clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Chanowith?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Whalen?
That's the end of the Committee of the Whole. May I say something?
Okay.
I'm so surprised and so pleased. I have never made so many motions in sequence and had so many seconds.[1363.65][1363.65](Laughter.) Thank you.
It's a new council.
Okay. And the next meeting of the whole will be next Monday at 7:30 October 25th.
Yes, thank you.
Any reports of special committees this evening? Reports of officers?
Just a brief comment. When I wrote this this morning, I wasn't really sure whether we'd have seven council members, six or five today. You will find that I placed at each of your seats here this evening a memo that points out the effects of having reduced numbers of city council members. The most important of those, for your purposes, is the Open Meetings Act effects, which, with the way the numbers work out right now, means that not even two members of the city council may discuss any city business without at first having been given public notice, and then only, they may discuss it, but only at a public meeting. That really does change things for how this works.
Would that include a council member speaking to the mayor?
It is true.
He doesn't vote, so he's not part of the...
Well, he can vote. I think I'd...
But then if I'm a party of, if I'm included, they're a body of five, and with me, we're a body of six.
Yeah, I would...
Could you check and...
I'll double-check on that, yes.
We won't do it until we hear from you.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Excuse me.
Anything else on that, Nate? Or did you have a question about that?
Yeah, I had one other question, and that is regarding communication. Is communication between two council members, as if maybe Mr. Whalen and I were to call each other and talk on the phone, I could see that being a violation of the Open Meetings Act? If I were to write Mr. Whalen a letter and tell him, "I'm planning on bringing this issue before the council," without getting a response, is that a violation of the Open Meetings Act? Good question.
Remember that the Open Meetings Act carries misdemeanor criminal penalties.
That's what I'm asking.
In that context, it has always been my practice, as has been the practice of Mr. Waller before myself, to counsel caution and to interpret in a way to err on the side of caution. So my recommendation in that regard would be to not do it. I don't know if there's any case law about that specific type of question. There is case law out there about emailing back and forth, which, you know, has kind of the written aspects of writing a letter, but more the contemporaneous, quick aspects of a telephone conversation. And the case law about emailing says that, yes, that constitutes a meeting as well. So I'll have a look and see. I doubt that I'm going to find anything specifically about letters, but again, I would counsel caution in that regard.
Yeah, my concern, just to make sure I'm clear, is I understand the writing back and forth, but if there's a one-way communication, if that counts. So if you do find it, that's great. Until you come back with an answer, of course, I guess I won't be able to talk with Mr. Whalen or others about these issues. Thank you.
I do think you can talk to yourself about things.[1558.22][1558.22](Laughter.)
In the shower. I have a question, which is, it's my understanding that it's pending council business that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, so I'm just thinking of my day-to-day activities as a council member. I am, a constituent comes to me, and she says, "I have a concern about parking around the high school," and, well, in this case, I have no one in five to actually talk to about that currently, but say I wanted to ask Ms. Pat about something that affected Orchard Street, which is between the two, could I ask her a question about a constituent's concern about Orchard Street that doesn't have to do with any pending business before council? Or is it, if there would be potential pending business as a result of our conversation, I am prohibited from speaking to her? Just trying to clarify what, I mean, what we can talk about, what we can't.
The language that the act uses is "public business." That doesn't necessarily mean just an actual item that's pending on an agenda or that's been placed formally on an agenda. I think that the safe way to interpret that would be to consider that if you believe that this is going to become something that you will turn into, or the other person that you're talking to will turn into a matter that calls for action by this city council, then I would treat it as public business. Now, you know, obviously, there's going to be a, you can think of a thousand different hypothetical situations where, and each one becomes more and more attenuated from being public business. I'd suggest using your best judgment and your common sense and bearing in mind the need to err on the side of caution. If you have specific questions, you're always welcome to call me and ask me. I'm sure if you'd prefer as well to talk to Mr. Waller, he'd be happy to answer those kinds of questions, too. Are you watching, Jack?[1703.01][1703.01](Laughter.)
So what you're saying is basically any communication we have with council members, we should just send to all members of the press?
That's pretty much it. You could communicate by press release, I guess.
Yeah. Any other questions on this matter? Okay, as Steve said, you know, if a question does come up, don't hesitate to call either Steve or Jack, and I'm sure they'll be able to help you out, at least discuss it and get it clear in your mind as to what you want to pursue. Well, we'll move on to new business then, just one item under new business, and that's an appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's my pleasure to submit Nancy Upman of 208 Pell Circle to you for your approval. She received her bachelor's degree in psychology from Case Western Reserve University in Ohio and a master's in social work from Fordham. She's a thirty-year resident of Urbana who's been active in the PTA at Yankee Ridge and Urbana High School and the local 4-H. And if approved, her term would expire June 30th, 2008. Are there any questions? Not a motion would be in order?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And with that, we have no more business to come before us this evening, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.